Good evening and welcome to our first Facebook Live of the Town Council meeting for Weston Supermayr. I'm afraid that this evening we won't be able to take any of your comments on Facebook, but we hope that you enjoy the meeting and hopefully some of us will address any comments that you've got after the meeting. I'm now going to hand over the chair to Malcolm Nickerson, who is our town clerk. Thank you, Malcolm.
Well, in fact, it's for the mayor now to open the meeting. I don't believe the chaplain is here, so you may wish to move on to public participation, Mr Mayor.
Indeed, I will. So I do believe, well, first of all, welcome, everybody. Welcome to the public who might be watching us on Facebook Live and thank you for joining us. It does open up the ability for people to engage and see what's actually going on, which happens in the town hall quite frequently. And I would like to thank my colleagues on the council who have all got here tonight. As it's a lovely sunny evening, so there would have probably been more enjoyable things to do, if not more pressing. However, I do believe we have two members of the public to speak to us tonight, so they would, if we can let them into the meeting and if they could introduce themselves and like to speak to or address the councillors.
Hi, Sophie. I think that you wanted to speak first. We haven't got your video just up at the moment. Hi, Sophie. Hi. Thank you so much. Whenever you're ready, please do address the councillor.
Fab. So hello, everyone. My name's Sophie. I'm a resident of Weston. I'd just like to speak today at this meeting about how we as a town can respond positively to the Black Lives Matter movement and about the ways in which we as a collective can create a lasting change. Over the last month, I have seen countless examples of the ways that the people of Weston have united in their show of support for the Black Lives Matter movement following the murder of George Floyd. At the start of June, a peaceful demonstration in support of the movement was held outside the Tropicana. Here, just over 150 signs were placed in honour of the movement. Following this, residents of the town have created a Black Lives Matter Facebook page specifically for Weston, and it's amassed over 1,200 members already. Here, people post articles, media and self-produced interviews, which encourage an open discussion across many different races, age ranges, genders and backgrounds. These past weeks have required the white and white passing members of our town to confront some startling truths. For centuries, white people have benefited from institutionalised racism and systems which discriminate black people simply because of the colour of their skin. I cannot speak on behalf of the people of colour in this town, but I can imagine it must be frustrating to see that these conversations are happening now when they should have happened a long time ago. I'm calling for the councillors of the town council to receive thorough diversity training from a Black Lives Matter representative or affiliated organisation. By receiving this professional development, councillors will be able to challenge their current thinking, grow and begin to learn and become more aware of the racial inequality still present in our town and the UK. This will need to be in-depth training that goes far beyond the usual tick box standard that corporate training usually provides. With councillors more informed on the issues of racism, we as a town can build on the positive Black Lives Matter movement developing as we speak. Our councils are supposed to reflect the interest of its people, and it's very clear that many people in Weston would like to make a change.
Thank you. Thank you, Sophie.
Nakia, would you like to speak?
Hi. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me. It's Nekka here. So basically, just following from what Sophie has said, a lot of people ask what Black Lives Matter is and why all of a sudden it's of such interest. This movement has been going on for a long time. The hashtag started in 2016 and then it died a death because people lost interest. And it wasn't until George Floyd was killed whilst he was being videoed. And because it was how he was killed for such a long time with having someone kneeling on his neck, it went viral and people are now talking about it a lot more now. And I guess because of COVID-19 during lockdown, people had less distractions and actually people are having more time to think about what can we do about making life better. Anti-blackness is not an American-specific phenomenon. This is global and also the UK is not innocent. You know, after having 400 years of second classes in subjugation to humanisation, we can't expect that racism was wiped out after 60 years of political freedom. It's an ongoing thing that people need to talk about and keep doing it, not put it to one side and think, okay, well, we've got the Equality Act. Everything is okay. You know, we do live in a world where, which, you know, it's sad to say, was developed by white supremacists and we are, well, you are all direct beneficiaries of this system, whether you are racist or not. As a white person, you don't have to worry about the skin, the colour of your skin when you go into a shop. I mean, I still have to worry when I'm walking down a road, in particular if it's an affluent area. I do get people being suspicious about me. I have had the police called on me because they thought I was trying to break into a property. I have security following me around shops, and it's not just expensive shops. Even the local shop I live next to in Weston Supermayr, the security guard follows me around. If I go to the airport at the check-in, I get stopped 90% of the time because of the assumptions people have. They think, I must be carrying drugs. My husband is white. He walks through the gate. He gets through every time. They don't ask him any questions, but I'm always the one that's stopped. So, you know, we can't say racism has stopped. It affects employment, housing. I did an experiment once. I applied for a couple of jobs and I used my English-sounding middle name, which is Barbara, and I used my partner's name at the time, which was Wilson, just to see what would happen. I applied for jobs which I'm perfectly qualified for, have the experience, and I got a 100% response rate. In comparison to when I applied for jobs using my name, Nekka Opene, and the response rate was significantly less. So, and as I said, even in housing as well, I've looked at rental properties with my sister. I've been with her to attend appointments and I've had a couple of landlords who have been very upfront and have said, you know what, I'd like to rent the property to you, but I'm worried because of what my neighbours will think. Now, you think this was the 1970s, but it still happens today. It's just that people don't talk about it. And now we've had, we've had more, we've had a lot more discussion in the media, more people are talking about it. And, you know, my experiences are not unique. There's lots of academic studies. So if you want to read anything, I can email you lots of things to read. So basically, the Facebook page we have, which was developed over a month ago, has generated a lot of people in the community joining in, sharing information. It's also becoming a safe space to talk about racism. We had a picnic on Sunday, which was just a nice social, just to get people to join up face-to-face and build a stronger community. Because the more you get to know people, the less you are afraid of them when they don't look like you. And we've got, we've got people who are interested in education, improving the curriculum that's available to the local schools. So, yes, I really welcome this opportunity with any engagement you're willing to do for the group. I can't, but we can help to facilitate, whether it's a town hall meeting, use our platform. As Sophie said, we've got over 1,300 members and it's growing each day. You know, we would welcome that especially. And basically, you know, when someone in the city is down, it does affect the people. If you have, if you have an inclusive community, it means a better community and, you know, just a better environment for people to live in. So, you know, we would bite your hand off for any engagement that you're willing to have.
Thank you, Neka. Finished?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, great. Thank you very much. Yes, and the points you've made, I can assure you won't fall on deaf ears and officers will pick that up in terms of what sort of training they would feel that they could arrange in this sort of format or whether we should wait a little longer for a person-to-person format. Then it's easier to meet and understand the communities that we try and represent. But we can assure you that these will be addressed. And you're quite right, it won't be simply a tick box exercise, I can assure you of that, Sophie. So thank you very much for joining us tonight. You're very welcome to stay on and watch the meeting if you want to. Becky will make sure, whichever way that is, otherwise I might have you accidentally voting and changing decisions for us. But thank you very much for attending tonight.
Thank you.
And colleagues, if you can give me some way tonight, because obviously this is the first time, I believe, we have done anything like this before. And it is as strange for me as it is for you. So if we can have any apologies for absence, please.
Mr Mayor, the only apologies are from councillor Richard Tucker, who is unwell and unable to attend.
And just for information for all councillors on the news that poor Richard was not well, I took the liberty to send a bowl of fruit, I believe it was, and a card from us all. So he was, he was very grateful. I think Catherine said he was delighted to have been immediately thought about by his colleagues. Any declarations of interest?
Sorry, sorry, Mark. Councillor Hitchens as well, please.
Malcolm's got that.
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
Any others on the floor or from the computer? Okay, thank you. So any declarations of interest? Okay, thank you. May we, approval of the last, the last meeting's minutes, please, of the 16th of March? Doesn't that feel like an awful long time ago? If we can have approval? John Crawford-Hawley is the first one I saw, councillor Crawford-Hawley, and seconded by Alan Peake. Okay, so I'm just going to...
Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Was that, were you wanting to speak?
Could I withdraw that? Apparently absent.
Okay, so you'd like to speak on the minutes, was it?
No, I proposed to accept them, but I was absent at the meeting, so I can't propose that.
Were you? Okay. So councillor, are you happy to propose them? Andy and councillor Porter is seconding them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, item four, you've had in your papers the mayor's engagements. As councillor Caitlin would have seen, he would have been completely wasting his summer in terms of mayoral duties. I have done four, of which two have been online and two have, I've been at the town hall at a desk. So I think the decision in terms of pushing things back is probably a fairly sensible one, and it's proven to be so. So, so for engagements and those, the two we had at the town hall, well, the Grove House was the, and Roger might remind me of her name, but it's the lady who made all the masks and what a cracking job she did now, as we're going to need so many of them. You're muted, Roger, if you're going to speak.
Sorry, it's Lauren.
Not Lauren, it was, yeah. It was very grateful for receiving those masks. Now, I'm going to take the liberty to bring Alex into point 11, item 11. Now, I'd like to thank Alex for, I know Alex only got back from a holiday today to work. And he was actually away on holiday, which is unusual these days, under the canvas, I believe, with the sunshine. So I'm very grateful, I'm very grateful he has turned up to answer questions because many of my colleagues on the council here are aware that this is part of my work within North Somerset. And I did feel quite uncomfortable about trying to answer questions and defend an idea. So I'm going to, first of all, let Malcolm talk to his report and then open it to the floor for questions and discussion with Alex Hearn from North Somerset.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I did circulate a report, so I'll be very brief, actually. My contribution is essentially on the second page of the report, which is that these proposals need careful consideration. I would suggest that the town should welcome North Somerset's renewed interest in improving the town, now called place-making rather than regeneration, but there clearly is interest in improving Weston. There's clearly a lot of interest from businesses, plus the college, the town centre partnership, the bid, et cetera. And I would suggest that perhaps as the democratically-elected body exclusively representing our town, in principle, we should at least explore as a minimum this and perhaps agree to take part in setting up the place agency from the start. I know there are some controversial aspects to this about online presence and so on and where that should go. So I totally understand that's to be explored later on and needs a lot of careful debate. So by all means, explore that. I don't think that necessarily contradicts having a look at taking part in the agency as it's set up. I do think longer term, it would be better off, it needs to be more than a talk shop. Talk shop's a little unkind. It's how things start, but I think the ambition should be a community interest company, which is then independent of both councils, includes business and community interests and truly represents Weston in an independent way. And finally, I've been invited to a couple of putative meetings. I don't want you to think I'm mad to be at meetings. I think I can assist with my legal background from some of the setting up process. In principle, I do think the council should appoint its own representatives and perhaps a councillor should be in at the start, if you follow my suggestion of exploring and taking part in it. But I've not made a firm recommendation because I do realise there are controversial aspects to this and therefore I await members' instructions.
Okay, I'm looking through screens, so if you've got your hand up, I will come to you. Otherwise, I would like to give Alex, whilst you're thinking about questions, give Alex a moment to briefly speak about the whole place-making principle and where we, and how we have got to where we are today.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So, good evening, everyone, and thanks for having me. So I joined North Somerset Council almost exactly two years ago. And I have the word 'place-making' in my job title. And Weston clearly, as approximately half our population seem to be the second-largest place in the west of England, is of major interest as a regeneration opportunity. My observation when I came in is that we could certainly at North Somerset Council broaden our approach. We have done a lot of projects around public realm and improving buildings and we continue to, you know, pursue our heritage action zone projects, which are really, really valuable. But on top of that, we can potentially do an awful lot more and add several more dimensions to that. We've, the last six or seven months, we've been working on a new, what we're calling the place-making strategy for Weston. And I suppose it started out as, certainly from North Somerset Council's perspective, an exercise to renew our sort of regeneration vision for the town, to reflect that additional set of dimensions. Along the way, we, we and the organisation, we worked with Turner Works, did an awful lot of engagement with the public and encountered an awful lot of passion and energy and clearly the greater collaboration. And therefore, I think this, this place agency as a vehicle is a reflection of that. We, there are several organisations in the town that are, one way or another, committed to making Weston better, whatever that means to us as respective organisations. And perhaps there's an opportunity for us to do that through greater collaboration. So this is a proposal for a network of like-minded organisations that are passionate about Weston. And I would like, I think that includes us at North Somerset Council as well, to work collectively, principally through a series of specific initiatives around events and programming cultural activity and generating communications activity. And of course, as the paper says, exploring the online presence of the town. So some, some practical activities, but that activity reporting to a focused board that represents the town council, North Somerset Council, the business community, the college, the bid and others, so that we get moving on a greater level of collaboration. And then I guess the last thing I'd say before you may have some questions is, government expects towns to do this. We are, we are ahead of the game a little bit in doing this. If we, if we progress this initiative. You may recall government dished out something called the Towns Fund to various towns around the country last year, just before the election, actually. And it wasn't a bidding round, they just gave it out. Now they've given that money out, they are now expecting those towns to create town boards to show that cross-sector, cross-town governance and leadership. So if we are going to be as a town, regardless of who we work for, but as a town better equipped to get the next round of towns funding, whatever the government's next initiative is, we could be really head of the game if we've got a good, positive new vision for the town, a real sense of collaboration and collective working and a really good place identity that is, that really supports all that's great about Weston. We could be, we could put ourselves in a much greater position. That's it. That's all I want to say for now. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Alex. And I'm sure there'll be many questions for you to answer in a moment. So I haven't had any indicators yet, so do we have anybody? Oh, oh, I see. Okay, no, that was councillor Crawford-Hawley.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I actually want to hear what the councillors who are only town councillors, I don't mean that disparagingly, but I would prefer to hear what the town councillors think of this, rather than in any way trying to influence it, as it were, from the North Somerset side. All I would like to say is from that side, the history of trying to change things is a long one. Those of us who have been around for a long time know that pots of money come from government in drizzled rabs. We set up, we set up schemes to attend to issues in one bit of the town. Then we go away and a couple of years later, we attend to issues in another part of the town. Nothing seems to be coordinated. Even the names change. I mean, we now talk about place-making. Five minutes ago, we talked about regeneration. 10 minutes ago, we talked about civic pride. And there is a danger, though I'm sure it's not going to happen this time, but there's a danger of reinventing the wheel and organising so many meetings that we all think are terribly busy. But the end result is a mismatch of things. You only have to look around Weston to see where it hasn't worked. You think of the work done at Biglam Corner, the work done at the entrance to Grove Park, the work done on the Promenade, Princess Royal Square, Alexandra Parade and so on. None of these things are coordinated. And so what I would like to see coming from this place-making strategy, from this, this agency, is at least some coordination for the way we think Weston is going to, is going to proceed. We need a commonality and we need, we need to know in advance what money is going to come to us and how it is going to be apportioned, rather than simply apportion to individual schemes as they, as they come along. So I would very much like to hear what town councillors expect of this. That's the thing. What do they expect of this? We'll invite Alex back in a year's time to tell us what has been achieved. And if it's the usual thing, well, you'll give us a very short speech. Hopefully, it'll be a long thing, Alex, and have achieved a lot, despite the fact there's no money. And we've obviously got problems in lockdown. So that's my contribution, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Crawford-Hawley. Councillor Macleod, Pete? I think you raised your hands. You're on mute. Okay, I think that was a no. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Alex, for that introduction. I mean, I totally agree with a lot of what councillor Crawford-Hawley said. I mean, I think anyone who has been around a long time and been around the block a few times know that there's nothing new. And I think one of the big problems that we have got is that what we're trying to do in Weston Supermayr is not unique and everybody is trying to do it. So actually, it's a particularly difficult challenge, isn't it? Because not only are we trying to get it right and try and reinvent ourselves in a way that doesn't repeat the mistakes and failures of the past, but we're also doing it in an environment which is changing very rapidly and where all towns like ours are trying to go through the same process. So I think it's extremely difficult. And I suppose the one thing I would say is that I think we have to be realistic about what's going to happen and what's going to be achieved. But what I do know is that by working together, we've got a better opportunity and a better chance of learning the lessons and achieving what we want. It seems to me that the two principal issues that the town council would have and I would have as a town councillor in this situation is firstly, making sure that we are seen as important and equal partners in the process for this place agency and this place strategy for Weston Supermayr. Because I think, as Malcolm said, quite rightly in his introduction, we are the only elected body that represents the whole town of Weston Supermayr and we have a uniquely important voice. So I would want assurances about how we're going to manage that. It seems to me that there are ways around that. I mean, I think Malcolm's quite right that the representatives to the place agency board from the town council should absolutely be appointed by this council at its annual meeting in the same way that we appoint all our representatives. We might choose to do something differently in the short term, but certainly when we get back to normality and we have our annual council in May next year, hopefully, that is exactly what I would expect. And I think the second issue is about what it means in terms of the identity and contribution that the town council has already made to the place-making approach for Weston Supermayr. We might not have called it that, but actually the town council has been doing great work, often despite North Somerset's cutbacks and lack of intervention rather than thanks to. So I think particularly about our tourism approach and visit Weston Supermayr, but also the approach in terms of some of our cultural and heritage assets like the museum and the blakey and others. So I think the other critical thing is to make sure that it is crystal clear to the place agency board and to North Somerset that the town council makes its own decisions about what it does with its own assets and its own resources. And whilst we might well be supportive of the overall approach of the place agency, that doesn't mean that we're going to abandon the things that we have been doing and making a success of. So I would say absolutely, let's be open to a conversation about how we can use our resources to the maximum effect. Because in the end, we all want Weston Supermayr to succeed. But we shouldn't be precipitously making, taking a view about whether one online portal is the right approach or anything like that.
Thank you, councillor Bell. I'm scrolling across to see if there's any other speakers. Oh, hang on, we do. Councillor Peak and then councillor Russo.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Can I speak? Helen Thornton. I've had my hand up quite a long time.
Oh, I pop backwards and forwards.
I'll stand down.
Are you sure?
No, you go ahead, Alan, but I just didn't think I could say.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I fully endorse what councillor Bell has said. I think from my own point of view as team leader, is that basically, I became aware of this place-making agency one week before the 1st of July, when it all had to be up and running. And I think that with hindsight, I only wish that they'd come to the town council to give us a presentation on what they wanted. Because basically, what's really happened is that by the first of July, names were already put on a piece of paper who was going to be the representatives, as councillor Bell has pointed out. So that in itself is not democratic. But you're absolutely right that we need to be at the table, but at the same time, we should have been consulted, not after first of July, where here we are now, trying to get things sorted out. So that's all I have to say at the moment, and I'll give way now to councillor Thornton.
Am I all right speaking now?
Yeah, unless we wanted an answer from Alex on any of the first two things, speakers or three speakers. Otherwise, we'll get so far behind, I'm sure he'll miss anything that was asked of him. And then straight on to you, councillor Thornton, if that's okay? So Alex, would you like to?
Sure, okay. Anything? So you're absolutely right. I mean, the town council has done an awful lot in terms of active placemaking over the years. And I absolutely recognise some of the comments about what North Somerset may have or has not done over the years. This isn't, there's no agenda here. This is about collaboration and working together. And I think that I absolutely respect that that you need not make any decisions about any kind of asset, whether it's physical or online. This is about, I guess at this stage, a commitment to explore this, to work together, to be at the table from the beginning and see where we can take it. Because you're quite right, after years and years and years of making success of the museum, the Blake K, Visit Weston has a really broad set of content on there. Why would you want to walk into an initiative that you might, or some people might think would threaten that? But I just want to give you, certainly from my perspective as a senior officer at the council, there's absolutely no agenda, is not a reflection of any sort of content or quality of anything. It's simply, we could do much more if we work together. I think, I mean, councillor Crawford-Hawley made some really, as usual, made some very salient points about, you know, fads of regeneration, and there are buzzwords, placemaking is the current one. And it means different things to different people, but you're right, we need to show some progress. And I think we can do it despite current circumstances, or perhaps because of certain circumstances we find ourselves in, we have an opportunity to get moving quite quickly and actually deliver some changes over the coming year. And then councillor Peak, about your point about the way this has been presented or introduced. Yeah, absolutely. Take that feedback. If it was introduced ham-fistedly or quite short-term, I don't apologise for that. This is something that's come out of a process over the last few months and was not, that's sort of come up as an idea, I suppose, certainly from suggestions from Mark and Michael's North Somerset councillors to how can North Somerset council be much more joined up with other agents, other organisations and agencies in the town. So but I absolutely get that we could have introduced this in a much earlier and cleaner way.
Thank you, Alex. Councillor Thornton?
Hi, yes. Thanks for letting me speak. So I read Alex's, you know, very thorough report on this. And I do have lots of questions on it, actually, Alex, but you'll be glad to know I'm not going to ask you them all this evening. I'll probably email you if that's all right. But one of my biggest concerns about this is actually the board and how the board was selected. Because it seems to me that it has some very glaring omissions from the board, given what the board is doing. Now, it's interesting tonight that we've had some speakers from Black Lives Matter, because there are no voluntary sector or BAME groups mentioned on either your board or advisory committee or et cetera. I'm a trade unionist, you know, given that this is a business thing, an employee thing, I think the trade union should be given an opportunity to have a say on this. The other thing that I'd be very concerned about is that the board apparently will be meeting in secret. Now, given this is about the town of Weston Supermayr, and we've all got an interest, you know, in making our town better, which is, you know, a great aim of this, I think, you know, having a secretive board that's, you know, plotting secretly to do various things, I personally am not very happy about. And going back to what councillor Bell was saying about choosing our own representative, I don't think we have to wait till May to choose our own representative. I'd like to nominate right now the leader of the council, councillor Alan Peak, my colleague councillor Alan Peak, to be the town council's representative at that first board meeting. So as Alan says, and other people have said here, we will be in this, you know, from the beginning. But I would also like to suggest that we do defer actually voting on agreeing to any of this, particularly given our concerns about the question, until we've got a lot more information and we could defer it to our September meeting. Again, as my colleague Alan has said, you see, this has really been, well, certainly I feel the same as Alan, it's really been sprung on me there. Thank you.
Is that, have you made a proposition in terms of, I'm not sure which is your proposition. Is it having Alan Peak as a representative?
I suppose I've got.
Delaying it?
Yeah, I think we need to delay the, you know, actually agreeing to take part in this. You know, that we note that we're very supportive of it, but that we actually need further information and that we also defer our representative, appointing our representative till the September meeting. Although my preference would be that it be Alan.
Right. Councillor Russo?
...council represents on this board. What I am impressed with is the members that have already been selected on the board, the enterprise, North Somerset Enterprise Agency, the Weston Chamber of Commerce, the Weston Business Improvement District, Town Centre Partnership, et cetera. And I would like to go back, because of that, I think it is so important that if this is going to work at all, that we are the place that businesses will want to come to. And I know that when I was on North Somerset Council for that short time, one of the things was attracting businesses into Weston, so that people and the employment to those businesses came from the Weston Town Council area. And we had Weston Enterprise Board, Enterprise Zone. What happened there? It was a flop. It didn't happen. And you look down the road at Bridgewater, and they were flooding into Bridgewater. And what I would sincerely ask is that they go back and look, what was it we were doing wrong? How did we fail to represent ourselves to the businesses at that time? And I know things are going to be a bit weak at the moment and probably for several years, but somehow we've got to make sure that as the enterprise place for businesses to come to, we're doing lots of house building, we have got to be number one. And I would like Alex to explain, if he's got any analysis at all, what went wrong last time. Not today, but at some stage.
Yeah, I think that's a difficult one to ask, because I think some of us would say it was probably political councillor Russo in many ways. So I think it's a question you can probably legitimately ask him by email. But if we get into a debate around why things failed in the past, I'm sure many of us might have a view. But it's a fair question, and I think that that could probably be picked up. So councillor Crewe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think we should welcome the report. I've been studying it now for the last three weeks with officers on the way forward and see how we can get involved and help. The one good thing I see coming out of this is the problem that the town councillors had over the last two or three years, is the reluctance of organisations to make use of our website. They want to create their own, including North Somerset. And the failure of North Somerset to give a detailed advance notice of any events. They use the excuse that it needed to be kept to the last minute before it could be advertised. If we can change that, that's a big step forward that we need to do. There are two or three things in the report, Mr. Mayor, that need, I believe, a second look at, but that's for North Somerset meeting, not for this one. But I think in general, I support the way forward with the report. And I think we need to look at it in a lot more detail. As I say, I've already been discussing it with members of our officers. And I think there is some good points to be made and a good starting point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Councillor Willis, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, councillor Willis, if I can hang on a second, because you're on the list, so I'll come back to you. But I'm sure, yeah, I've got one hand up now. Right. So councillor Crawford-Hawley was in. Councillor Russo, will you also have your hand up? Okay, I think it was you next then. I just see someone pop their hand, I was cracking across the screen. So you carry on now.
Hi, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I welcome this and I welcome regeneration. But I feel as a young person and as a single mum of this town, and I represent them and SEM parents, I feel like our voice is lost. So I welcome this with open arms. But we talk about the people and getting their views and stuff, but I look at this list of boards and I'm like, how are we going to invite that and our views to that kind of board of people? And that's what I really am struggling with, because it just seems to be, you know, Chamber of Commerce great and the bid. Like, there's a lot of small businesses that cannot afford to go on the bid. So how are those really minute businesses that equally add to Weston's economic growth going to be able to very much contribute to what's needed for Weston? So that's kind of my concern is the youth of Weston and very small businesses. How are we going to be heard?
Okay, I'll let Alex come in in a second, but I think Town Clerk circulated the full report from North Somerset. And I don't know how many of you have access to this now, but on page 17 of that report, the membership, I think the report, we need to be very clear about how this setup works, and I won't get too involved. But is the board itself, you don't want to get infixated on, because that is simply a facilitator. That's not where the advice comes, that's not where the guidance comes. That comes from the advisory board, which is much bigger and will be advising and helping set the agenda. The board of 10 or 12 people is simply the ones who are going to be responsible for the legalities and to make sure the projects are delivered as the advisory group asks. And just for those questions you just asked, and Alex will jump in in a moment, that does include, advisory boards, et cetera, do include community groups, other business networks and workspaces. And so the CCG, the Civic Society, town councillors. So there are lots of other, Arts England, Arts England and Sorking. So in that report, it shows the huge gathering of stores it's trying to bring together. And they'll be the ones who will be advising into the board what's required, what's needed and what's involved. And I think Alex has actually said at a previous meeting where this was suggested that we will be looking at engaging with unions as well on those boards and other suggested groups. So Alex, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, it's some really valid challenges just raised. And in a sense, they themselves reflect the challenge we face, which is that there are an awful lot of interest. Weston is a large town. Large towns come with a lot of interest groups, a lot of opinions. Some of them are, some groups are very formal and organised and institutional, some of them less so. So it may well be that the board as proposed is not quite right. And maybe there's an opportunity to look at that. But it's how do we define or identify a group of individuals who will effectively administer this thing? Not, you know, they are a board to facilitate and administer it without it being so big that it's difficult to do that. So I think I think it's important to look at the potential power and energy that sits within the advisory group, which could be limitless in membership, really. Anyone who's anyone, who's got something to say about Weston could be in that. And there's no limits to that, really. And that's where the real breadth of interest, whether it's external investors like Historic England or Arts Council England or any particular business or community group could participate there. The challenge about the diversity on the board is sound. And actually, myself and Angela Hicks, who, to begin with, were proposing to be the independent chair of this board, are actively discussing that and trying to find ways of making it more representative without making it too big. And that's the challenge we face. But if there are if there are views that it's, for example, it's too white, I mean, it is too white, it's all white. I mean, there's a reasonable balance of men and women on the group, but not so much in other respects. And either we could have another look at the board, or we absolutely invite anyone who wants to be involved in the advisory group to be involved in that. And perhaps what we could do also is that we're calling the board something to initiate this thing, get it moving, make a start. And then we can start to address some of these issues.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Willis on the telephone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I don't think there is any need to delay this paper until any later time of September or any other time. The town council's commitment is to this paper and to its detail. So delaying it won't stop anything and it won't help anything. So I'm against delaying anything. So I think we need to carry forward as to the details that are in there. The finer minute detail can be sorted out as it goes along, as you have already said. And as for the board members, that can be sorted out as it goes. There's no reason not to. It doesn't have to be written in stone now. And in Weston Supermayr, we are extremely fortunate. I have said it many, many times over many years. We do our partnerships and our equalities very well with our groups. We have the VMA Forum, we have the Multicultural Friendship Association, we have the LGBT Forum, we have the Malayali Association. All of these people are all retired. A lot of them work in the town in our care sector, especially the Malayali's, they're in our care sector. They have a huge voice. And our Bangladeshi Association as well. Some of our ladies in the Bangladeshi Ladies Association, which has just started up, are working in the care sector. So we've got our fingers on the pulse as the town council, as you know, Mr. Mayor, for the amount of engagements that come in from all of these groups. We already know who they are, and it is very easy for them to slot in and out for different parts of what is needed for this programme as to when it happens and to feed into it. So I'm fully supportive of it, and I'm not supportive of delaying anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, I think I've got councillor Crawford-Hawley, the last speaker. If anybody else wants to speak, if they can put their hand up. But on you, councillor Crawford-Hawley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think it's got to go ahead. It would be terribly easy to delay matters in that good local government way for a further chat. I don't think we should be doing that. But I think Helen and Ellie raise very important points. And I don't think they should be in any way be discounted or brushed under the carpet. I have a fear is a strong word, but when the But when, when the town council puts one person on to, on to this board, I think we need to know exactly how that person is going to discuss all of these matters with the town councillors. Because so often in the past, you nominate a person on to another organisation and that's the last you hear from that person. That person is not going on to the board in order to do his or her job. He or she is going there to do our job. And therefore we will instruct that person as to how that person will respond. And if you don't like the way that person is carrying out our business, then we get rid of that person. It's as simple as that. So we have got to be in complete charge of the person who goes on as our representative. And that raises an issue. I have no objection to, to the name councillor Porter, but would, would you be kind enough, Mr Mayor, to tell me how his name appeared?
Okay, yes, if you're asking me the question. So initially, it's simply that the councillor Porter's name appeared because councillor Porter has been responsible and leading an engagement group with business over the last, I think it was about 18 months, 12 months possibly. Ian, you correct me if you want to quick, I'll let you speak in a sec. And, and so it seemed sensible just to bring this group together in the first instance, to have Ian on that group so it would keep the whole system moving. So we didn't, because Ian does have good contacts in terms of those businesses. And in fairness, and as the executive member for Business and Economy on North Somerset, I wasn't invited into that group until well into its operations and work. So it is a case of trying to bring it together. And that is the only reason Ian finds himself immediately put on that list because he found himself round the table with those businesses when we tried to launch this. Now, agree with you entirely, and I'll let, I'll let Ian speak in a sec. If the council felt that that wasn't the right appointment later, at next year, when it comes to its round of dealing with outside bodies, well, the council will decide. And I, and I'm sure other, other members might want to put their names forward. But that's how we generally do the process. But most people on this board were selected to what they brought to the table currently. And I think councillor Crawford-Hawley is very right that if you don't bring anything to the table, then really you don't need to be on the board because you will be challenged to do things and you will be challenged to make things happen. Because that's how we're going to change the, the cake at the end of the process. If we keep shoving in the same ingredients, we're going to keep getting out the same cake. So unless we change things, we won't see any changes. Ian, would you like, councillor Porter, would you like to just comment on the reason you might find yourself where you are?
Did John want to come back first of all? Let, let John just come back because he had his hand up first, Mark, and then I'll, I'll answer some of that after, all right?
Okay, councillor Crawford-Hawley then.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't wish to make any personal comments, but I'm, I'm sorry, Mr Mayor. The more you got into that, that analysis of how these people were appointed, the more I found it unacceptable. I'm sorry, Mark. I, I just don't understand how, I mean, who was it who sat down and thought, no, then these are the right people we want? I mean, I'm looking through that list of 15 names. Well, they've all been there before, every one of them. And again, they're pretty good people, but somebody, somewhere has, has chosen them. I haven't, who has?
Right, Alex, you might better help with that one because you had discussions with the. I mean, I think again, it's important to say that the reason we went for the independent chair is to take all of these decisions at the setting up of this stage out of politicians' hands, who tend to muck most things up anyway.
So, so there's been, as, as, as the mayor said, there's been a group meeting for some time, a business group created by councillor Porter. And that was a valuable network of, of interests in the town, very much saying similar things about the need to collaborate. And it seemed like literally a good place to start to create a discussion about this. We met as a couple of groups, by the way, the board doesn't exist yet. All we're doing is proposing at the moment, all that's happened is that a board has been proposed. A board has not formally met or anything. A group of, a group of interests, including those that have met for some time, reporting to councillors around, around the interest of business, got together to discuss that this could be a better way to collaborate across the town and has suggested an initial, an initial collection of people who could form that board. The board has not met, it's not met yet.
Thank you, Alex. Councillor Gibbons.
Thank you. I was just thinking that the way, the language that's employed in describing this place agency, where you have this board and then you have the advisory boards and you have the project groups. If we are to really be reassured that the real work is going to be with the advisory board, then why don't we change the language and call what you're proposing to be the board, I don't know, the trustees? And the advisory board is the board or the executive on it? So that people understand that that's where the real work is going to happen? Because otherwise I don't feel reassured about the role of community groups or any other interest groups like unions being involved in that. The impression you get at the moment is that the advisory board is secondary to this board that we are all discussing and wondering about how it's constituted and how we've chosen the people on it. And we all seem to have a lot of concerns about. So I suppose I'm questioning whether we need to look again at the structure of this agency. I don't feel enormous amount of confidence about the inclusivity and the real involvement of community groups and other special interest groups in the advisory side of it. So that's my comment. Is there any way that we can change the language or even rejig the, the structure so that people like Ella said, you know, feel that young people, people with special needs, ethnic groups are going to get represented?
Alex, you'd like to comment?
No, I think again, that's a really valid challenge and we could definitely, we could definitely go away and look at the, the terminology and the terms of reference of those groups. In terms of the structure, again, we can, we can definitely take another look at that. However, I think if we, there's still, in order to administer something, which could be driven by a very large collection of organisations and energies within what we're currently saying is the advisory group, it will, I think what we'll find is it will still need something that is smaller to administer this as a device. But we can definitely go away and have another look at that.
Okay, we could be going back to the days of the town trustees, Catherine.
Bonnie, you should say that, yes indeed.
Okay councillor Bell, you're next on the list.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. I was just going to try and put forward a alternate or a slight amendment, slight tweak to councillor Thornton's proposal in, in the interest of actually moving us on. Because I think we are in danger of trying to get into the detail of, of how it might work when I'm not sure that we're at that stage in the whole process. And I, and I totally agree with lots of the comments that have been made. I mean, Alex will know that the comment about it being dominated by the usual suspects is something that I've certainly regularly made. And I, and I totally agree with councillor Sase and councillor Crawford-Hawley on, on that front. You know, I do, I do struggle to understand how you're going to get new, a new bold approach from the same people. But, but anyway, that, not that, not, you know, putting that to one side, I think in principle, it's a good idea. You know, do we want to work together? Yes, we do. Do we think the town council has got a positive contribution and important and crucial, crucial contribution to make? Yes, we do. And so it seems to me that we absolutely want to be sat round the table. So I think the argument is about, you know, exactly what that looks like. My suggestion would be taking on board councillor Thornton's initial point would be that we appoint councillor Peak and councillor Porter as our nominees to the board through until the annual council meeting in May. The reason for that being that councillor Peak is clearly the leader of the town council and is best placed to play that coordinating and representative role for us. Councillor Porter has been involved rightly or wrongly, it doesn't really matter how he got there, does it? He has been involved in those formative conversations. And I think it's helpful to have a bit of continuity as we move forward. And he's clearly done a lot of really good work in terms of building relationships with the business community that will be really useful as part of the conversation. And that we then invite them to participate in the process going forward and come back with a further report in the autumn when there's been more progress in terms of the development of the plan and what it looks like. So that we can then start to get into some of those detailed issues that I think members have quite rightly raised. If you read the full report, that dynamic between the advisory board, the advisory group and the main board probably isn't very clear. And I think that does need to be clarified so that we capture that bigger range of experience. I think there does need to be more definition around exactly what the purpose of the place making, place agency and place agency board is going to be. I think that's quite clear. The town council is not going to be in the space of committing funds or committing our own resources until we get that clarity. But I think we also need to recognise that everybody has to start somewhere. You obviously have to invite some people to participate and to have some initial discussions so that you start to move forward. And I think it's really encouraging that councillor Porter and the town clerk have been part of that conversation and that we're now here at an early stage before all of this has been a set in train to have our opportunity for influence. And I'm sure that Alex and indeed the mayor in his other role will have been listening intently to the things that people said. So my suggestion would be we appoint the two elected members through until May and we invite them to come back with a further report outlining the progress and any recommendations that might flow from that in the autumn.
Okay, does that find, find a seconder?
Yeah.
Is that, councillor Porter, were you seconding or do you want to speak? You're on, you're on mute, but I do have, if you want to speak, I've got councillor Thornton first and then on to you in order.
Go on.
Okay councillor Thornton.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion of mine because actually it's not that dissimilar from my original suggestion. If we appoint our representatives now, they attend the first board meeting and they feed back further information to us at our September meeting. I suppose the only thing I would add is that we don't actually sign ourselves up to anything controversial right now because I know there are, for instance, some concerns around us giving up the visit Weston website. So, but other than that, I would be happy with that.
Okay, fine. And councillor Porter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just going back right to the beginning when councillor Crawford-Hawley was mentioning about, you know, the town council being involved in the town. This has come from the strategy that was put together at the beginning of last year. Because the town council was never involved with the business community as such within, within the town council. So my objective in the first place was no more than bringing the business together in the town, as councillor Bell has said, and getting everybody around the table just to see the ideas that they could come forward with. And, and you know, there is some really good, keen people within the town that want Weston to happen. And the fact is, is that it's been so disjointed for so long and the town council has never been involved in that development of business within the town. So we did put the strategy together for this year based on the, you know, the meeting that we've held or the meetings that we've held, and you've been involved with that, Mark, over the time. And it is really, really positive. So when this opportunity came up, when Alex and yourself and other people came round the table, it fitted quite nicely into that agenda. So a lot of the work's already been done about creating the people that we need and make things happen. There is other people around, and as quite rightly you say, the advisory board could be made up of anybody. It's charities, it's whatever it wants to be, you know, but there is a bigger, there is a bigger project here. So we're not talking about a small project, we're talking about a bigger project across the whole of Weston that could make a massive difference to everybody. So I thank councillor Bell and others who have seen the work that has gone on. And I certainly will pursue it because I have got good contacts and I will be representing the college as well on this board. So at the end of the day, like it's purely the fact that, I assume that Peak, councillor Peak, will be replacing the clerk on, on the committee or whatever it is. But quite rightly, we do not need a talking shop of about 20 or 30 people. It just will not work. You know, the thing is, is that we want to get it moving. I'm quite happy to help and get it moving, but you know, we haven't got time to wait. People want help and support now. They don't want help and support at Christmas or in the new, they want help now. So get on into it and let's move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Porter. Undoubtedly, I mean, I'll speak to Alex about the, the membership of that board. I think he and I have heard everything that's been said. So we have a proposal on the table, which has been proposed by councillor Bell and seconded by councillor Clayton to have councillor Peak the leader of the council and councillor Porter as two nominations to sit on this board, whatever we call it, trustees in the, in the first instance to the next AGM, just to try and get this project off the floor. Do we, do we have any further members? Or is, is that, Malcolm, are we happy with that proposal?
Yes, and I understand there's a general feeling that you also want a further report at the September council meeting, which we are hoping to hold physically in the new council chamber. It's been provisionally booked if we're allowed to. But councillor, the original proposition did say a report back, so is that included?
Yes. I would like that included and, and we don't need to specify a date, but I think in the autumn, as long as there is a report back when it's appropriate, I think that'll be helpful. And just to take on board councillor Thornton, Thornton's point, I think it would be good to just make clear that we are not making any commitments beyond that at this stage until we've had that further report. So just to give that reassurance, that we are not looking to throw into the mix anything else at this point.
No, fine. And you're happy to take that on?
If, if this is going to be such a high-powered organisation as, certainly as I hope it will be, then it will wish to make a report to every successive meeting of Weston Town Council. We would expect a report every meeting.
I would expect its, its representatives would do that. I certainly hope they would because that's what we should be doing as councillors. And councillor Clayton, are you happy to take those amendments on board as your seconder?
Yes, I am.
So how are we going to show the vote? Are we showing votes first for or against? And so if ever can hold their hands up, those in favour of the amendment and the proposition?
Councillor Willis.
Councillor Willis, you're for it, okay, we'll add that one, thank you.
For, thank you.
12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 20.
I made it 23.
22, 23, I think that's right.
28.
No, it's more.
It's more, that's 28 because you've got councillor Willis as well. I'll just keep your hands up once more and I'll just go back through.
It's clearly carried, Mr Mayor.
It is, it is.
You could just take a screenshot.
Yes, we've got an extra vote just sneaking in, there's, there's a way of getting a vote in, there you go. Okay, so it's, it's, if, if anyone wants to record a vote against, otherwise I can't see a vote against, it is clearly carried. Okay, thank you, that's, that's carried. And thank you, Alex, for giving up your evening for us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. So receive a report from the youth council, which is attached on item five.
I don't believe there's anyone here from the youth council. I don't believe there's anyone here from the youth council, Mr Mayor, unless the, one of the councillors has anything to say, it's just for information.
Councillor Codling, councillor Codling's on the youth council, yeah, carry on, waving there.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to say that the youth council have been battling on valiantly via Zoom, like many of us as well, usual fluctuation in numbers. So if I can do my standard appeal for members to try to encourage any young people and any organisations to signpost people to the youth council, the YMCA are doing a really fantastic job getting involved in all sorts of things to help our young people and their families at this time and state they were kind of for our support for them.
Councillor Codling, can I ask, do we engage with the schools directly? Because when we had the climate emergency protests outside the town hall last year or earlier this year, last year I think it was, there was some students there who go to, they went to, oh, I remember it was Wyven School, it's now Terence, no, oh, the one off the dual carriageway.
Hans Price.
Hans Price, thank you, thank you.
Good heavens, Mr Mayor, you went there.
It was Wyven then and it didn't look as nice as it does now. However, they said they hadn't had any engagement and I wonder how we do reach out to them.
Yeah, and I think that's a periodic problem. I think we sort of go, it's quite cyclical, so there'll be a certain burst of engagement and then those pupils have actually left the school within a few years. So it's something they know they've got to do time and again, they've just signed off their latest E-Zine, so that will be coming out. They've put quite a lot of work into bolstering their Instagram account and that will be going directly through to schools and they'll be exploring other ways to do that as well.
Okay, is there any further questions from anyone else? And I'm assuming the report is to be noted.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we have a set of financial reports, which I'm sure Sarah will speak to briefly, but I believe we have to, other than the approval of financial reports, item nine, I'm assuming we have to approve every single one individually as it is procedure in terms of financial regulations. Sarah, would you like to speak to them at all?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the first one is your earmark reserve report, which is your agenda item six. That report wasn't actually showing on my pack, so I don't know whether it is showing on on members' packs. It's an earmark reserve report. It's the final report from the one that was already submitted to council before the close of last year and it just makes the alterations at the year end point. So the intended total earmark reserves for the year are £343,399. And the most notable change to the previous report sent to you was the receipt of SIL monies, which came in just before the close of the end of last year, 31st of March, to a value of £104,601. And there was also the addition of the extra from the resolution made about the civic monies of £5,571. So it's earmark reserves at the end of 31st of March 2020 of £343,399. So I would read approved, please, Mr Mayor.
Okay, I'm assuming there's no questions unless there are any questions regarding that money, but the reserves. So how do we vote on this? Do you vote in favour of the reserves or?
You need to approve that they're.
Approve that they're a correct record.
Yeah.
Okay, are those in favour that this is a correct record? Please show.
Councillor Willis.
Thank you. Any against, any not happy with that record?
Yes, carried.
Carried, thank you. Okay, on to item seven.
So, Mr Mayor, item seven is your final internal audit report for the year. So this is the report that we received at timely intervals. We have one report every quarter on average from all of the council's activities. This is to provide council acknowledgements that you have all the governance systems you have in place, your standing orders, financial regs, your policies and procedures are being adhered to. So this is to provide assurance to you and I'm pleased to report that that was a whole year of a completely clean audit report, which is, which is good.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that and thank the team for a clean audit report. So if we can have a vote to, any questions first? And then we've got a buzz somewhere, I hope it's not me. And then all those in favour to accept that report, accept that audit.
Councillor Willis.
Thank you councillor Willis.
I think that's carried, Mr Mayor.
That's carried, yeah, easily, thank you. Item eight then, end of your accounts.
So these are your formal accounts, they are set out in A, B, C and D on your agenda and you will need to go through them in that order.
Indeed, in order, yes, thank you.
And recommended. Yeah, there is a paper in your audit pack, which there is nine questions on the governance statement within the AIGAR that the council do have to formally adopt. So you must bring that to your attention, Mr Mayor, that that does need to be looked into. Just scrolling through the pack myself now to find the page for you. It is on page number?
Four.
Four. Four of the annual governance statements, the AIGAR, and there's four questions and you as a council have to answer formally yes or no to those nine questions, please, with the exception of number nine actually, because we don't have any trusts, so that would be not applicable.
But Sarah, presumably you have a recommendation for each of the questions.
Yes, but well, I can't formally recommend because the council has to acknowledge it themselves, but based on the internal audit reports and the reporting systems that have come up through policy and finance, as your deputy town clerk and RFO, I have nothing to bring to your attention. You've had all the information throughout the year, but you do have to formally as a council recognise those questions and, but I see no reason, unless you do, Malcolm, why they, it should be quite straightforward for approval of all nine.
Okay, but we've got to go through each individual A, B, C, D and E separately, I believe, Sarah.
Yes, please, yeah.
Yes, so I'm just going to take a vote on each. So for a required, for us to approve those statements, so statement eight A, those in favour.
I'll abstain, Mr Mayor, because I can't see anything. I don't know what I'm seeing, so.
We're clearly carried. I assume councillor Willis, that will be the same for all of them, so.
It will have to be, unfortunately, I can't see anything, so I don't know what I'm looking at.
Have you got your papers?
I have, but I can't find it in the papers at all because page four isn't corresponding with anything and I've gone backwards and forwards, unfortunately.
Eight B then, please councillors, approve that statement. Those in favour?
That one is the questions, Mr Mayor, so you will need to.
That is the questions.
Yeah, you will need to identify that you answer yes to those government questions, please.
And we can do all nine at the same time.
Yeah, unless you felt otherwise, yeah.
Yep. So councillors, unless any of you would like to say no to any of those nine questions, please, if you can voice that now and then otherwise we'll vote on all nine questions on a block.
Sorry Chairman, I was muted, someone muted me, I heard nothing then.
Okay, so we are.
What you were saying.
All it was is that we, the questions for the annual return need to be answered, there's nine questions, we either answer them yes or no. We ideally want them to be yes, as long as we're happy with the accounts as they have been done and the audit as it has been done. If you feel you need to say no to any of those questions, I would like you to voice that now and then if we don't have any nos to that question, we will vote on all nine questions on block.
Thank you.
So if there's anyone who feels they cannot vote for the audit questions, so then I'm voting on block, all nine questions, please. Those in favour that yes is a correct record? Please show.
Carried.
Okay. Item eight C, sign and date annual return, that's straightforward, are we happy for that to be done? Those in favour?
Councillor Willis, four.
Thank you. Again, clearly carried, Dan Clark.
Thank you.
And item eight D, receive the notes and accompanying the statement of accounts. Does that have to be voted on, Sarah?
No, it's not.
Not even ordered?
No, it's not.
Bad to say, yeah, that's to be voted on, okay. Thank you. And so then I think item nine, which is to approve our January reports, they can all be done on block, unless there's any questions for Sarah over item nine and the January to March's financial reports.
Mr Mayor, can I just say, this is a summarised version because there's several months worth, so they are slightly condensed from what used to go to policy and finance committee. If any councillor, we really welcome any scrutiny from any councillor. So if any councillor wants more detailed information on a particular month or a particular management account, please feel free to request that. I'm sorry to give Sarah possibly some extra work, but we really welcome scrutiny from members.
Okay, thank you. So even after the meeting, if there's any questions on any of those items, please approach Sarah with those. So all those in favour to accept, approve those from January to March, show please. Thank you councillors. I think that's a clearly, clearly carried, thank you, everybody. So item 10, so CCTV upgrades and procurement. Are you speaking to this, Malcolm?
I think it's actually the deputy town clerk's report, so probably I'm aware of it, but I'd invite her to.
Okay, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So this is just carrying on from the agreement made by town council to upgrade the CCTV. Your previous resolution was to appoint the contractor select to carry out the works as per the tender that you received. What was discussed in the procurement stage was the need for looking into and having costings provided to the town council for any upgrades to cameras as was necessary and most importantly to have a cost for the mobile CCTV unit. I've been to all of those meetings with, as you asked for, we're doing the procurement alongside Paul Morris and Chris Harrison in the CCTV department and we've gone through that process now. There's a list been sent out with the agenda of the additional comments. Now Malcolm and I met with the police and the team at North Somerset back in November where we identified some problem areas and we took back information from, feedback from councillors on places like Castle Bach where cameras weren't working and other areas like that. And that has all been addressed with this procurement and the suggested upgrades have taken on board all the comments that have certainly been fed up to Malcolm and myself to take back to North Somerset council. So the report in front of you gives you details of the suggested upgrades, which the team feel would really enhance the CCTV for Weston. It's not included in the original purchase that you've already approved, but this is in addition to that, as detailed in my report and the recommendations are there. So happy to answer any questions as long as they're not too technical in regard to the actual CCTV, but I can feed those back. Councillor Crewe also sat in with me for the last part of this procurement with councillor Bailey and also councillor Macalure had an interest, but unfortunately we couldn't coordinate all three councils at one meeting, so councillor Crewe would be able to help with any questions as well.
Mr Mayor, can I just add, draw attention to the part in the deputy town clerk's report? So you can afford to do all of the upgrades and additions that were circulated and you'd have a couple of thousand pounds left out of the hundred thousand. So it's pretty much up to the budget, but I believe it's within it. Of course, alternatively, you can decide that there's some you don't want and save some of the money.
Okay, anyone, I'm going through the screen, if you want to speak, please show. Okay, councillor Plin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm just wondering if, Malcolm just said if there's any we don't want, if there's any on this list that we did want and having spoken with police and residents, there's a few areas in my ward, for example, especially around the parks and near the shopping kind of areas, is there, where do we go to discuss new cameras as opposed to?
Sarah.
Yeah, so the CCTV, as I understand it, is, you have to go through quite a process to actually install CCTV, you can't just put it based on a residential want, it has to meet certain criteria and that's assessed by Howard Potherke and his team at North Somerset. So it's about how many crimes have been committed, you have to, yeah, it's quite a legal process in where you can and can't put CCTV, so that would have to be done. We could, we could put a proposal through to them from the town council for them to look into, but it would need to go through that process. We couldn't just say we're going to buy another camera and you would need to put it up, it does have to follow a process. So my suggestion would be to put anything in writing up to the town clerk and then we would forward it on to the CCTV team for consideration. But of course, any additional cameras will incur an extra cost again and we would also need to consider whether there is infrastructure in the places you are wanting to put the CCTV cameras in terms of the transmission back to the CCTV room, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Fox. Councillor Fox, you're on mute if you're speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, the question I've got is regarding the not fitting a camera at the bottom of Ashcombe Park, Milton Road. I would have thought that was an ideal place. In what way does it not meet the criteria?
Would you like me to respond, Mr Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so this was one we actually discussed when councillor Crewe was at the meeting with me, so he may be able to enlighten more. But that one was looked into and there wasn't enough crime committed in that area to warrant a CCTV camera, reported crime and crime that had gone into the police system. So that was the reasons we were told that there wasn't enough reason to have a CCTV camera installed at the bottom of Ashcombe Park.
Well, I thought the idea of cameras to prevent crime.
Yeah, in terms of cameras, councillor Fox, the processes that we have to look at, different ways of preventing that crime, we start using CCTV, so it could be improved lighting, it could be extra police involvement, it could be just going through the park once in the evening to move crowds on, but the idea of just popping a camera in there because it's a bit of antisocial behaviour, especially if those antisocial behaviours haven't been recorded as crime or recorded to the police and it's just that local members are aware of it. The problem with that, of course, when officers start looking at the statistics around reports, if it is just local member knowledge, they don't have those stats and because they don't have those stats, they can't therefore recommend a placement of a camera. So if there are particular problems in the bottom of Ashcombe Park, I know there were several years ago, but I wasn't aware of them currently, then we need to make sure we report those. Councillor Ussay.
Councillor Ussay. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Ussay, are you on mute? Councillor Ussay is on mute, did you want to speak? You're still on mute. Okay, carry on.
There's one and they were in additional cameras proposed, but not in priority order. The one that says Queen's Way, well, I wondered where there was a location of that or is that just an upgrade to Castle Bach?
I have the answer.
Yes, Sarah, or has councillor Crewe got the answer?
Sarah, you're muted. Sarah, you're muted. You're still muted, Sarah.
I was on a different screen. I clicked the wrong button. I'll let councillor Crewe answer that. He's waving frantically. He's had a lot of involvement in this particular camera, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Crewe.
This is an additional camera. They've decided that it's been quite dangerous on the corner near the school. And there's been a lot of problems with, ran by the bus stops, a lot of problems with hoodwinds and so on. So that's why that camera has been sourced. That is completely new camera to anything else. Mr Mayor, I'd like to make the point that the advantage on this new cameras is within the agreement we have, is that unlike previously, we've got guarantees that these will be serviced and cleaned every six months. We have the option to change cameras to one on 80 degrees. The most important thing is to pick up members that believe there should be a camera. Currently, the law states quite clearly where you can put a camera, and North Somerset's been through this in quite minute detail with the police. And at the moment, the areas mentioned do not qualify. However, if there is ongoing problems, we've agreed that a mobile camera can be put in that location. And if that proves to be a big problem and there is recordings of problems, then that would open the way to put a more permanent camera there. The other benefit with these is the police, who were at the meeting when we agreed this, from the technical parts of the police, are developing a system where they can tap in to the CCTV system, rather than have to come to the town hall to pick up a disc, as happens today. This new system, they were so impressed with the one we've chosen, they've made the North Somerset the gold standard. And all other local authorities are talking to, they're going to say, if you want us to be involved in being able to take images direct, you have to use this system. So it's one up for us, Mr Mayor.
It is. Yeah, thank you for that. And councillor Rouxay just wanted to come back, and then councillor Bailey.
Yeah, just to reassure other councillors, I'm very impressed. I'm very appreciative that the camera is going in there in Queen's Way. And just looking at the crimes recorded May 2020, just to give you some idea, there were 39 antisocial behaviours and 55 violent crimes, which is quite a huge... And one doesn't always associate that with, well, that's such a lovely area.
Yeah, sadly more and more, isn't it, currently? Councillor Bailey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You can hear me great.
Yes, yep.
I've just got a few points. Councillor Crewe mentioned about a mobile camera. I thought we were having two effectively mobile cameras. Perhaps you confirm that. But can I, can you give, can someone give me an overview of the timetable? I know we've approved this expense and we're itemising, we're getting down to individual cameras. But what are we talking about? Are we talking about December? When are we going to be implementing? I know it's the control centre who needs to be revamped as well. Over to you.
Shall I answer that, Peter, or do you want to start on that?
I'll start, Mr Mayor. I'm chairman of the Community Safety Group on North Somerset. We've got a meeting coming up on this to plan when everything will be in place. So that's coming up next week. Everything is underway. They're starting to install cameras very shortly. And most of the cameras in Weston will be the first to be done. Hopefully, Port Z will be last because they were awkward about it. No, the four towns are now all in place. Difference is with us, because we're connected to town hall, all the cameras we're putting in place are being put in a situation where they're all transmitted through camera by camera to the roof of the technical college, because that means that we don't pay any line rental. The other three towns are having to have different systems in place, which links into Castlewood. So it's more costly for them and therefore takes longer to put in place. Ours really is just a case of installing the cameras on the post, making sure they have line of sight for the next camera. As long as one of those cameras can see the area on the top of the college, then they will work through the system immediately with no transmission costs, no transmission delays. So that does make it much quicker. I will say at the end, Mr Mayor, if I may, something about reports.
Okay. Sarah, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, it was just to kind of add to that. So I had confirmation from Chris Harrison's team that the work in the CCTV room has actually started. So the upgrade of the CCTV room is underway, if not or nearing completion. And then going on from there, the cameras will be upgraded as soon as the CCTV function is in place with that high-tech system.
Yeah, there's one week left of fitting. They've been in there three weeks. It was a four-week project, so nearly there. Okay, and you just want, was there anyone else? And otherwise, I'll let councillor Crewe just quickly finish off over some stats he wanted to give us.
Yes, Mr Mayor. One of the things that PNF wanted in this is better reporting usually cameras and any crimes are found. This is a report which I think we need to get everything in place and then monitor that. And I will have a committee meeting on that in North Somerset to make sure the report is meaningful. What I don't think we need is the usual report, which has got all the cameras listed and whether there's been an event. The other side of it, of course, because they're linking now with the police, it means the police information can be better inserted, the information. So we will get a more meaningful report as PNF requests it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it then. So do we have approval for the procurement? I suppose it's the procurement now, procurity, have we, even though they're getting on with it? So I assume that, Sarah, what you're looking for is approval for the spending of the money?
Yes, please. Approval of the spending of the money to come out of the capital reserve that you've made provision for, and also approval of the cameras that have been suggested or an alternative, if it's not all of them, please, Mr Mayor.
And that is within the budget?
It is, yes.
Okay, all, move approval, second up please. I can divide councillor Lagarde, she's the first on the screen. So all those in favour, please show.
Councillor Willis.
That's unanimous, I believe. I think everyone's voted in favour of that. So thank you very much. Item 12, the East of Ellinbrook Park West from Decharge. Malcolm, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So this has already been to Policy and Finance Committee more than once. But to cut a very long story short and save members time, basically, it's Ellinbrook Park West is a wasted asset. So the East Park, the town council purchased quite a few years ago and manages as a sort of dog walking park and play area. The slightly larger West Park is owned by the Clifton Diocese and was being used by the Catholic Church and school as a school playing field and for fates occasionally. It was not generally open to the public as a whole. But in recent years, it's been completely closed off by them because of health and safety concerns with people getting in with the intermittent use and then leaving needles and things. So the diocese offered a long lease, possibly something like 100 years, to the town council. There were some concerns about taking on that commitment and the costs, and especially the fact that it's a site of special scientific interest. We have been, we were talking to both the diocese and the Natural England until March, but that wasn't really concluded. In the meantime, we've got this wasted asset. There's no doubt that the coronavirus situation has caused some mental health concerns for people, some people being afraid of infection or losing relatives or fear of losing their livelihoods, et cetera. And working with Fay, our excellent new grounds manager, well, under a year anyway, she came up with the idea of a short lease of, say, three years, which doesn't commit the council to anything long term, but to develop it as a very sort of gentle wellbeing park, which people could use. It wouldn't have lots of hard landscaping or anything built in it, but would just be enable people to walk in it. The central area would be mowed. The trees would have to be watched, of course, to make sure they're safe. But there's lots of evidence that parks are good for people's mental health. It would be a quiet semi-natural place for contemplation, walks and gentle activities. Possibly a bit of people could use it for Tai Chi or just strolling around. And the three-year lease is relatively risk-free. It would be very cheap to maintain. The net cost has been calculated in total, working with the deputy town clerk of about £4,300 a year. But the grounds managers made efficiencies of much more than that in the last year. So the cost can be completely absorbed. And therefore, I would like to recommend, there are recommendations on my report. And the recommendation is really to go ahead with a three-year peppercorn lease. There's no rent, there's no rates on a park. So with a view to occupying it, to open it to our local community to use essentially as a gentle wellbeing park. There'd be some limited school use, which has been agreed with the diocese. And give it a try. If it turns out to be problematic, the three-year lease doesn't commit the council to anything major, but just gives us long enough to do something for our local community. And it could be started really quickly with the diocese coming along with it. So I would recommend that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any speakers? Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for that report, Malcolm. I mean, strongly, strongly support this. I think it is a really opportunity, a really good opportunity, as Malcolm says, to bring the park back into active use again. Central Ward and the town centre is, as many members will know, a community that is amongst the most deprived in Weston. And in particular, some of the health and wellbeing outcomes are amongst the poorest. So I think something which is absolutely geared towards encouraging and enabling some of those health and wellbeing practices is really, really to be welcomed. My only comment, just to float for officers' benefit, is I hope that they will also be able to explore opportunities to enable other schools in Central Ward to make use of the park as well. So not just Corpus Christi, who have obviously had a historic connection, but also Wallace Scott and Christchurch primaries, who are relatively nearby and also don't have any outdoor space. So I think particularly for things like sports days and so on, they would really welcome the opportunity to make use of the space on an occasional basis. And otherwise, just say thank you very much to the officers who've worked so hard to bring this off in such a very sensible way.
Thank you. Councillor Gibbons.
Thank you. I was going to make the same point about extending it to other schools. I also welcome this. I think it's a great opportunity to enhance the provision for people in the centre of Weston. And it may go some way, if we handle this properly, to alleviating the stresses that there sometimes are between park users and dog walker park users. Because we've all, as councillors, had people come to us to complain about trying to enjoy the park and yet having unruly dogs running about. So perhaps this area wellbeing park will be a place that we could, and I hate to say this as a dog owner, but perhaps we could have this as a non-dog walking park so that there is somewhere people who don't appreciate dogs running up to them when they're there with their children could use. And other dog walkers will know that the other part of the park, they can take their dogs. Just a suggestion.
I think that's a very good suggestion, and I think that'll probably be taken on board by officers as long as we signpost very clearly that the park across the road is for dog walkers, so people don't feel excluded generally. The only other thing I would say, based on what councillor Bell has said, would it be possible to simply talk to officers about the ability to paint a running track on it for the school running days and stuff they do normally at the end of the year and encourage them to use that park where they don't have, rather than just not having a sports day? So it just might be something very simple we can do. Doesn't have to be a full 400 metre running back for schoolchildren, just as strips. So a consideration that we might approach the schools to say they can use it and we'd be happy just to make sure the grass is cut and it's nice and tidy for them. Anyone else would like to speak? Councillor Payne.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes. Yeah, I'm very keen that the town council gets on with this, taking over the West Park and getting it improved and open to the public. The negotiations do seem to have been dragging on for a little while now. But I just don't really understand why we've reduced the lease down to three years now. Because it does, it does strike me that that does introduce the risk that we could, we could take it over, do some improvements, get the mowing done and that sort of thing. And then potentially we can lose it again after the end of the three-year period. So I don't know why, why we're not pursuing the longer lease from the start.
Can I answer that, Mr Mayor?
Yep.
So there's essentially two reasons. One is that some members were concerned about the longer-term costs. We were trying to get some written assurances from Natural England, given that it's a site of special scientific interest. And they do have a lot of ability to say, no, you can't do work on trees, no, you can't cut a path, that sort of thing. I think in practice, that's not very likely, but it was a concern that some members had. And secondly, so it gives you, a short lease gives you the chance to try it out. And the other reason is it can be done very quickly. A short lease could be, it can be almost off the shelf, I think, and can be entered into more quickly. I think if you were going into a 100-year lease, there's a lot of things to consider looking over that very long time. And it would probably take longer to negotiate the detail of the legal document, which once entered into is legally binding for that length of time. But the intention, talking to the diocese, would be to use those three years to test it out and well within that period to look at developing the and entering into the longer lease, which would of course require a further councillor resolution.
Other than we could enter into that lease with the caveat that we have a right to renew, of course, which would then protect councillor Payne's concerns. Councillor Clayton.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Was I right in hearing that the park is currently locked down due to drug paraphernalia or drug use in the park?
That was one of the reasons. So because the church and school use was intermittent, it was locked up a lot of the time, which made it a secluded area, perhaps a little even more attractive to drug users. And the school didn't have the ability to clean up needles. Obviously, there is the risk that you will get the same or a similar problem to some extent with the council managing it. But the council also has the grounds team who manage that risk in the East Park and in the Millennium Green and any other sites that we have. Indeed, the cemetery has probably had more problems in recent years than any of the parks. So the grounds team would routinely check it, empty bins and litter, et cetera, and are geared up to deal with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm wholeheartedly in support of this and I think it's a great idea. Obviously, my only concern was if we were going to start using it for sports days and stuff like that, that obviously the park is thoroughly checked and risk assessment's been put in place. Because the last one I want, or any of us want, is for any child to stumble across anything that they shouldn't be, you know, that's danger to health.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So councillor Rouxay. You're talking with mute on again, councillor Rouxay. Can Becky, can you unmute councillor Rouxay? Yes, can hear you now.
Somebody must be muting me then after I've spoken, because I have to keep ringing it back. Anyway, just very quickly... Anyway, just very quickly, related to councillor Clayton's comments about drug use, is there any facility for locking the park at night?
If you want me to answer that, the answer is yes, but to be honest, people can still climb over the fence. And in fact, the fact that there was no public in there for most of the time possibly arguably encouraged people to go into a secluded area, but there's no absolute solution to that. Most of the parks aren't locked, at least to pedestrians these days. It's...
Thank you. councillor Bailey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think you can hear me. I would be happy with a three-year lease. I think I am worried about, I mean, I know at one point there were people camping out from there. And dog walkers I know are a problem, and obviously Faye's got an excellent idea to make this park mental health-friendly. But there are also issues with, as I said, probably drug-taking and so on. Probably we're the best people to do with it, but if we have a three, excuse me, if we have a three-year lease, we can resolve, we can work out and resolve those issues, hopefully for our classification, and it won't cost us a huge amount of money. What I would like to propose is that we have an annual review. I know that's another task for officers and so on. This is assigned to community services, to oversee and the judges or otherwise. Thank you.
So let's be, let's be clear councillor Bailey, before you switch yourself off, what do you mean by a review? I mean, it'll be reviewed in the normal terms of the reports to your committee or whoever chairs that committee now. But in terms of what you're actually asking for, in terms of activities or in terms of condition, I mean, because you can ask for those, you can ask for those things anyway, do we need to schedule a report every 12 months, or would you just ask for it?
I think we need to schedule it, and I think, yeah, all those aspects that you've covered. Basically, I'm worried about the costs, because whatever we take on suddenly becomes a very, very cost-heavy exercise. And if it's only £4,000 a year, well, at least we, that's what we've accounted for. But if it does get out of hand and we're having to take, or officers to go in there because of repeated drug-taking problems, and dog walkers also becoming a problem, I just worry that this is going to get out of hand. So if we have an annual report, that we take it on the...
Okay. Just, just a matter of, just a matter of information then. Malcolm, do we need to propose an annual report, or is that the wit of the chairman of that committee to ask for it?
Well, obviously, the chairman can ask for it, and we'll do it. If you want to include it in your resolution to put down a marker just to comfort you, that's fine, but...
My only, my only concern, and I don't know what other...
Report as much as you like.
I don't know what other councillors feel, but I just feel if every single item we take on wants an annual report individually, it could become a real, real headache for officers, but if other councillors think it's a good idea...
Currently, Parks and Player has actually come under Tourism and Leisure Committee, by the way. That may change with the review that was ongoing and will come back in September.
Okay, so you've, you've proposed to add a, an additional report every 12 months for that. So that would become an item, an amendment, so we'll vote on that in a second. Just, do I find favour with councillors in terms of possibly just seeking a right to renew that lease at three years? So if we do spend money, and we feel we want to renew it, and the church says, no, they want it back because we've spent money, we then will have a right to renew our lease on it. Would that find favour with councillors, or should we just leave it at the three years and just play it by you then? Would that find a second from the chair?
Yeah, I'd second it.
Okay. So we have two amendments. We have two amendments then. First, the first amendment will be a yearly report. And so, so if that is approved, then that gets added to the recommendations. I'm correct, aren't I, Malcolm?
Yes, I don't think you had a proposal for the actual recommendations.
I think, no, I think councillor Bailey proposed it. Did we have a second? Oh, see, no, we hadn't had a, for the original recommendations.
Well, unless councillor Bailey was proposing the recommendations with that addition.
I was.
I wasn't too.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
And as a proposal, are you happy to explore the right to renew?
Yes.
That gives us the right, we don't have to. Okay. So with those two items added to the proposals, are we in favour? All, all those in favour, please show.
councillor Willis.
Thank you. I think that's carried. That appears to be carried, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, it's carried, thank you. Thank you very much then. So on to item 13, motion to council understanding order 11, councillor Thornton.
Hi. So you should have all the motion, the motion in your pack. The motion proposes that Weston Supermayr Town Council becomes a living wage accredited employer by joining the Living Wage Foundation scheme. The Labour Group proposed this as part of the discussions around the town council's strategy earlier this year, but now due to COVID-19, this seems to become even more relevant. The coronavirus crisis has exposed the low wages of many of our key workers, such as air workers, shop and supermarket workers, and delivery drivers. These are the people who have been risking their lives by going to work to keep our society going and allow the rest of us to stay at home and stay safe. Many of these workers are paid the so-called national living wage of £8.72 an hour if they're over 25, or the minimum wage of £8.20 an hour if they're aged over 18 but under 20, sorry, over 21 and under 25, or £6.45 an hour if they're aged between 18 and 20. The real living wage rate is higher because it is independently calculated based on what people actually need to live on. So in the full living wage motion, which is in your agenda pack, I've tried to outline the benefits and costs. Paying the real living wage benefits employers and employees, but it also benefits the local economy. More money in workers' pockets means more money spent from local high streets and in local businesses. This will be crucial going forward if our town is to recover economically. We pay our town council staff the real living wage, we set an example for other local employers to follow. The annual cost to the town council is relatively small. The chief financial officer, Sarah Peers, has provided me with some of the costing, and I think that she sent them round to you all earlier. So the cost actually for our permanent staff, who currently earn less than living wage, is £277.58, that's the annual cost to raise them up to the real living wage. And there's an additional cost for our casual staff of a bit over £3,000. But it does need to be noted that we haven't actually used many of our casual staff this year. So if we were, if we do vote for this proposal, it's unlikely that we will pay that additional cost. So the figures that Sarah's provided include all on cost and also the forthcoming real living wage increase, which is announced every November. Although we don't know precisely what that is, it's usually around 3%. In addition, there is an annual accreditation fee to the Living, Paying Living Wage Foundation of £288. So the cost of this may be small, and it really is very small, but the message it sends to the wider community is huge. And that message is that Weston Supermayr Town Council values those low-paid workers who have put their lives on the line during the coronavirus pandemic. At this difficult time in our town and country's history, we have an opportunity and an obligation as the town council to set an example and send out a signal to all the residents of Weston Supermayr that fairness demands all companies pay workers a wage that they can actually live on. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you, do you have a second? Do we have a second? Do we need a second to debate that? We've got a second with councillor Agassi. Okay, so to bet anyone would like to comment, would you like to speak to that councillor Agassi, or you just second? Okay.
Okay.
Right. Anyone like to speak? I'm going through the screen, so please, there's no one speaking, jump in if you want to speak. Okay, councillor Fox. Councillor Fox, you're, you're on, if you can unmute. There you go.
I had a job unmuting myself.
You're there, we can hear you.
I'm quite comfortable with the idea of the town council paying £9.13 an hour minimum, but not joining the foundation. I don't feel it's the town council's remit to dictate wages to other organisations and businesses. So I would not vote for that, but I would vote in favour of us paying the minimum living wage of £9.13, no problem.
Okay, thank you. councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And just to come back on that point from councillor Fox, we wouldn't be dictating anything to other employers, it simply shows us as being committed to paying the real living wage. And those of us who sit on the personnel committee will know that one of the issues that comes back a lot is how we attract people to come and work for us. And this accreditation from, from the Living Wage Foundation, I think, would send a good message to people who might want to come and work for us. So on those grounds alone, I think it's worth having the motion, but also going for the accreditation. So I support the whole motion.
Okay. councillor Fox, should you like to come back to that?
Well, I think we are dictating, because it says in these notes that we ensure that our contractors pay the real living wage. And a plan to ensure our regular contractors pay the real living wage and encourage everyone we do business with to pay it. So in my mind, that is dictating to them. And, you know, with the prospect of high unemployment coming because of COVID, I just think it's the wrong time to be stoking up wages. I think it'll cause more problems than it will solve. And as for getting staff, I don't think we'd have any problem getting any staff if we need any. We never have in the past. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, a point of information, Malcolm, if you can. Can we insist that our contractors show us their wage payments to this arth? Just question, because I simply don't know.
You can take into account social considerations these days, but to be honest, I can't answer your specific question off the cuff, I'd have to research it. The two bullet points in the motion at the end, don't, although the text of the document put forward by councillor Thornton does refer to contractors, the two bullet points at the end, which I took to be the actual motion, as on the order paper as well, do not in terms include that. So I wonder if perhaps that's an aspect that could be looked at at a later stage, if you don't mind. I see what is indicating as well.
Okay, councillor Thornton, this is your motion.
Yeah, I can probably answer this. Basically, the, in order to be accredited as a living wage employer by the Living Wage Foundation, you have to either be already or agree to immediately pay the real living wage to your directly employed employees. Then you have to put a plan together of how you can get your contractors to also do that. You don't have to do it immediately, but you do have to look at how you can factor that into when you, you know, contract, for instance, well, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head that we would do. The people, I mean, they don't do it anymore, but the people who used to work for Weston in Bloos, you would have to look at how you could work with them to get them to pay the real living wage as well.
Okay. So that could...
You don't have to do that bit immediately, but you do have to pay your own employees immediately. For me, see, the, unlike councillor Fox, where I don't want to dictate to other employers, I think we've got a very good opportunity to be a very good example to other employers here. And I think there's no better time to do this than now, because we are heading into an economic crisis, and, you know, we're going to need, if, for instance, COVID rears its ugly head again, because it hasn't completely gone away, we need our key workers and, you know, we need people to be earning, those that will be working to be earning a decent wage.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'm not going to vote on this, Helen, because as mayor, I will stay out of it. But I would make one comment, that in terms of just noting the report and the figures, then I must assume that the figures aren't as accurate as they could be, because if we insisted on living, national living wage, which as you know is our policy as well as yours, the fact is those figures of 2,154 were likely to be higher, because our contractors will seek additional compensation to pay the wages that we want paid. That might be very right, and this council might feel that's the right thing to do. That's all I'm saying.
They, they may, they may be, but they may be not. And of course, you know, as I've just said, this is about putting a plan in place to work out how we can do this with our contractors. It's not about saying to them, do it immediately.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, Ian, councillor Porter.
Mute, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, really. I do think it's inappropriate to do this at the minute. I mean, we're not a corporate company, we've just had a tax rise of nearly 30%. Half of the preset nearly goes in wages alone within the town council. We just heard of a project just now, it costs £4,000 to implement and run a park for a year. And the thing is, is at the moment, like, there's a lot of people that are out of furlough, are unemployed, or are going to be unemployed going forward. And I just think it's totally inappropriate that we should be looking at increasing wages at a time when things are in the situation that they are. If we look at the audit report, and if you go to page seven of the report, it says quite clearly in conclusions, under salaries and wages, no issues required and formal recommendations have arisen in this area currently. So at the moment, everybody's happy. So why are we, why are we worrying about things increasing, you know, and it's not just for one year, this is ongoing. And if we get bigger and bigger, then it is a bigger cost to the council. I don't see that as a proper way of dealing with council tax, when we, through the preset taxpayer, who are struggling at the moment to pay wages to other people. I'm sorry, I don't agree with it at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor. councillor Agassi. Oh, you've just remuted yourself. You came on, then you remuted yourself.
I'd just like to say, whatever the economic situation, we should be paying people a living wage. And it's extraordinary to hear us talking about there's going to be high unemployment, so let's pay everybody a wage that they can't live on. It's an extraordinary argument. And if we're talking about making Weston a special place, isn't that something wonderful to be able to say? We don't employ people on wages that they can't live on.
Thank you. councillor Bell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I totally support this motion, because I think it's absolutely right in principle and on, on every basis. We're not, we're not talking about some sort of, you know, philosophical point here, or some sort of political point here. We're talking about the lowest-paid people who work for the council and, and for our contractors for that matter, getting a fair day's pay for the job that they do. We're not talking about giving people who are, you know, living in mansions or fat cats a pay rise, we're talking about giving a fair day's pay to those at the very bottom of the, of the pay scales. And frankly, it's, it's really disappointing at a time when we've all been quite happily going out there and applauding all our key workers and all our council workers for the work that they've been doing throughout this COVID crisis, to then start turning around and saying that, that they don't deserve even the most basic pay scales. You know, we're talking about... pay scales. You know, we're talking about a living wage here. We're not talking about anything more than that. And I, and I think to start talking about it as if it's some sort of crazy notion is, is insulting to the people that work for us and anyone that we want to work for us.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Any further comments? I've got a few black screens. So, oh, councillor Bailey, please.
Yeah. Well, I don't agree. I don't agree with this motion. I think this is gesture politics. They put a label on something and just say, oh, we've got to do this. Our duty as councillors is to pay staff a reasonable, good wage, I'm not arguing, but just a blanket and just say, we've got to pay this, we've got to pay that. Our duty as councillors is to, a duty both to the employees and to the right payers. And the right payers are people who not necessarily earn a huge amount of money themselves, but they're forced to pay them. So our duty is to keep the rates to a reasonable amount. I recommend that instead of approving this, that we pass this to the personnel committee for them to go through this item by item and see if it's justified, see what is sensible. Because I've told, that's what the personnel committee is for, is to, is to, on our behalf, to assess these items rather than have a blanket approval. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay. I'm not sure if Catherine Gibbons wanted to speak then, or she was just leaning. Yeah. And I just wanted to ask a question, either of the town clerk or councillor Thornton, because I know she's involved in these things anyway. Can you just explain to me and therefore other councillors, if the, the Living Wage Foundation recommend an increase on wages, which is thus higher than the town or the government recommend for local government workers, how does that conflict or how's that conflict being dealt with currently? Or haven't we seen a conflict like that?
Well, obviously, they, you know, town council staff currently, they get their annual pay increases by the, the local government pay increase, which is negotiated by the trade unions. Now, every year, the trade unions do have as their sort of negotiating stance that they would like the lowest paid local government workers to be paid the real living wage. But they haven't actually managed to quite achieve that yet. But I am confident in the next year or so that they will. Now, you know, as far as the unions are concerned, they generally support this additional amount of money. I say generally, they do support this money. So, you know, you can still pay the, what's called the NJC pay scale, but for this lowest level of staff, we, we've hardly got any at the town council. Why in a way with this argument that we have tonight is ridiculous because the, the amount of money it's going to cost them is tiny. You know, it's
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You can come up, you know, you can sum up in just a minute. It's just, it was a question of information. That was all. And I think I had one other person who wanted to speak. Was it councillor Acton? Did you pop your hand up quickly or? No. Okay. Was there anybody else? Oh, councillor Gibbons, sorry. Councillor Gibbons first, then Codling, councillor Codling.
And councillor Sase, sorry.
So is it me now? I'm confused.
Yes, please. Yes, yes.
Yeah. I haven't got, I just want to say I do support this. I'd say to councillor Bailey that this is not a huge amount of money you're adding to people. And he should know from his connection with citizens' advice that if you pay people a decent living wage, then you're going to reduce the number of people who get into debt. You're going to reduce the claims for universal credit. You're just going to make people's lives that little bit easier. It isn't a lot to ask. And as a town council, we as councillors are community leaders in a sense. We are setting an example, which I would like to think that other institutions within Weston would then follow. I mean, I know that University of Bristol, for example, pays its workers the real living wage. I don't know whether Weston College does. If it doesn't, then I would hazard that the town council doing this might be a driver to encourage them and other institutions to do so. So I do definitely support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Codling.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I, it's, it's a difficult one because we're querying process as well as probably largely accepting. It's, it's a lawful thing to do. We all want people to be on whatever the, the calculation is for living. And I think somebody's made the point that that could well be much more than it is now. My, my primary concern is that whilst yes, I think similarly with equality duties, Malcolm might correct me, when we contract people, we have a responsibility to look at their equality policies. We would choose to have contractors who are complying with that. So if we follow down this process, we would choose contractors who are setting this pay grade. Now, already very, very distressed businesses, what councillor Thornton described as not much money, £4,000, would be absolutely devastating to a small business that who are struggling already. So passing that incumbency for them to, if they want to be a contractor of our choice as a town council, and we want to surely be supporting local businesses to Weston, but if we have that prerequisite that they can't meet and they are no longer our contractors, they go out of business, more people lose jobs. So I'm, I'm hesitant about the, about the consequences as this is carried out to the nth degree.
Okay, councillor, councillor Sase, who was next?
Hi, thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah. I, I really do support this. Again, in Weston, we do have a high number of people on universal credits, especially in, in the current climate. And, you know, I remember the days when we'd pick up a loaf of bread for like 35p. Now it's like £1.20, you know. So, so I, I think the fact that we're debating it is, is just preposterous to me, you know, because we have a high lot of food bank users and maybe we can get those people out of the food banks. And, you know, and it's, it's, it's all about, if we pay people more, then, then possibly they'll pay more into our local economic growth. And as Weston, we can then grow. And so I fully support this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Pepperell. Yes, here you now, yeah.
I do feel quite strongly on this point, but if one cannot pay a proper living wage, you shouldn't employ anyone.
Fair enough. Good chat. Right, okay. Is there anyone else? Or have we got them? And Helen can, sorry, councillor Thornton, sorry about that, too familiar, can some, someone, there we go. I think it's on you, councillor Thornton.
Okay, well, it's been an interesting debate. And, you know, I recognise some of the comments about, you know, whether the timing is right for this. But I, the reason I brought this forward because I think the timing is precisely right. And that is because of coronavirus, because of the fact that, as I said in the motion and in my little speech beforehand, that, you know, when we've been out clapping for our carers and key workers, we've all, you know, we've been clapping for those people. And most of them, the delivery drivers, the supermarket workers, the care workers, most of them earn less than the real living wage. And in many ways, you know, this is not just about our staff and our contractor staff. For me, this is about us setting an example. And, you know, if we vote for this tonight, we can, you know, have a press release about it. Once we get accreditation, we can use the Living Wage logo on our websites and all our paperwork, et cetera. And it will be very clear then that Weston Town Council thinks, you know, and wants to encourage other local businesses to sign up to this. Because actually, yes, it does cost a bit of money, but what employers often find is that they gain that back because they keep their staff longer and they don't have to recruit so often. And they save money that way and they get a more productive workforce. So that's my summing up.
Thank you. Okay, so straightforward, sorry, the four against. So you've got the motion in front of you. So all those in favour, please show. I believe 16. I'd like to confirm. Keep your hands up a minute, it's being confirmed. You okay, Malcolm? Do you come with same?
I'm struggling with the two screens. I'm sorry, because people appear in different places.
I had 16, if that helps, Malcolm.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think that's right.
Yeah, I've done it again at 16, yeah. Okay, those against, please show. Those against the motion.
One, two, three, four.
Seven, eight. No.
Eight, I think. I think I've got eight.
I think. Okay, well, it's, it's clearly, clearly carried. So thank you very much. I assume that goes now back to officers to implement and the personnel committee to make sure it's implemented. So I assume that's the route it takes. So thank you, everybody. That's it tonight. I'm sure we'll be glad. Two, two and a half hours. That wouldn't have happened if we're in the town hall. First of all, I've just wanted to say a couple of quick thank yous. Thank you to you because we clearly had more debate online, which is most unusual. We see more debate here than we certainly do on any North Somerset for council meeting. So I think that is an accolade to us in terms of the town council because it just shows we are engaged in these subjects. I'd like to thank officers, of course, but I'd actually particularly thank Becky Walsh because she's made this happen. And she's had to put up with lots of people who are like me, who is rubbish with IT and make sure everything works. So thank you, Becky, for that. And I'm sure everybody feels the same. So you now can go and have a drink or something, or a cup of tea if you fancy. But thank you very much and good night to everyone.